Good morning, I'd like to welcome you to the April 14th, 2021, meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Irvin?
Present.
Commissioner Hirschbein is excused. Commissioner Lewin?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Song?
Present.
Vice Chairman Maruzi?
Here.
And Chair Wermick?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, April the 8th. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
At this point in the meeting, I'd like to turn this over to Vice Chair Maruzi, who is going to make a few comments about one of the early pioneers who brought attention to the architectural and modernist heritage of Palm Springs. Commissioner Maruzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Earlier this month, we learned the sad news of the passing of educator and architectural advocate, Robert Imber. An expert on Palm Springs mid-century modern history, Robert started Palm Springs Modern Tours in 2001, a business that specialized in three-hour architectural tours of the city for locals and visitors. In close partnership with the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism, a primary part of his role was to provide press and media tours and information for lifestyle and design publishers and writers. As a result, Robert's pioneering work in promoting Palm Springs mid-century modern architectural history was a key factor in solidifying the city's brand as a modernist mecca by homeowners, commercial property owners, and developers in the past two decades. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda? Can I have a motion?
I can, I make a motion to accept the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. At this point, we will take public comments. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and Other Agenda Items and Items of General Interest Within the Subject Matter Jurisdiction of the Commission. Please note, the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the postage agenda. Three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. Testimony for public hearings. Should, there are no public hearings tonight, so items, testimony on items 2A, 2B, 5A, 5B, 5C, 5D, and 5E will be taken at this point in time. Thank you. You will have, applicants will have 10 minutes? Actually, no, you will have three minutes for presentation. If you're an applicant, we may call you back for additional questions later on.
Madam Chair, we have two members of the public who have requested to speak by phone. So what I'll do is I'll call those two members of the public right now. And anyone else wishing to speak at this time, please message me in the chat and I'll be sure to let you speak during, or after the two call-ins for three minutes. So please just send me a message. Thank you.
While you're doing the call-in, we received a letter today from Steve Letterman, and I would like staff to put that letter into the record for case item 51492, which is an item we heard and was adjudicated on March 25th of 2021.
We will do that, Madam Chair, and Mr. Letterman will speak after we have the two phone calls.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Roberts?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, this is David Noah with the Planning Commission. You are live with the commission and you have up to three minutes to provide your public comments. You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My comments pertain to item 5A under new business. My name is Greg Roberts. My husband and I are residents of Athena. I also represent the Athena Homeowners, the Homeowners Association Board of Directors. Additionally, I serve on the Board of Athena Neighborhood Organizations, part of One Palm Springs. Speaking as a resident, I support a determination that the Pinball Museum use, it's similar to other uses permitted in the M1P Zone. We welcome the Pinball Museum to the neighborhood, but emphasize that the approximate 470 residents of Athena have a right to quiet enjoyment of their properties. And like any good neighbor, the museum must be aware that noise is a concern, especially if the Pinball Museum uses their facility for private, public, after-hour events. Our recommendations, observations are as follows. Number one, in no case will the facility be allowed to amplify music for any purpose, especially outdoors, such that the noise is heard in the Athena complex. Number two, Gen Autry is an extremely busy and even dangerous thoroughfare. While there is a traffic light at Cameron's to manage ingress and egress to the proposed facility, I am most concerned about the safety of pedestrian traffic that might be crossing the street to go between the air museum, which is across the street, and the Pinball Museum. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon and to give you some conditions to propose for your approval. I think this will make this a win-win decision for Palm Springs residents, businesses, and visitors. Thank you, David. I'm finished.
Thank you. And just for the record, that was Gregory Roberts. And I'm calling Jeff Garrasie.
This is Jeff.
Hi Jeff, this is David Noah with the Planning Commission, and you are live with the commission now. And you may provide your public comments. You'll have three minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you. My name is Jeff Garrasie. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Jeff Garrasie. I grew up in Palm Springs in 1975. And in late 1980, when I was nine years old, my mom took me to a burger joint in Cathedral City called Pups and Sons. And it was there that a young man named Toru Iwatani took all of my money from me. He didn't steal it. He was too smart for that. Instead, he had invented something that caused me to eagerly part from all the birthday money and all the Christmas money I'd been saving up. What he had invented was a little game called Backman. I was a total 80s kid. I lived in the arcade, hung out with my buddies there after school. I met my first girlfriend at the arcade, and the arcade even taught me what physical irresponsibility was. And I think Paul Lewin will probably remember, because he was in my class, and I saw him at the arcade. I've attended the Pinball Museum's Arcade Expo every year since Expo 2.0. I still have the teacher to prove it. I can't even describe to you the incredible blast of nostalgia that just knocks you on your butt when you walk inside and see what Mr. Leaks has created. It's absolutely phenomenal. And the fact that he's willing to share his toys with the public here in my own backyard. I'm bouncing off the walls with excitement. I think it's great to have this venue in the valley, and I'm 50 years old, for crying out loud. This museum will have nothing but positive impacts for Palm Springs. Of all the events I've attended at the Banning Location, not once have I ever witnessed any acts of aggression or violence or drunkenness, or anything even close to that. All I've encountered at these events were good people, enthusiastic, smiling and laughing, having a blast, engaging in conversation with people you don't even know. And I look forward to it every year with my son. I can only imagine how amazing this new facility will be, and I'm hoping to donate my time as a local artist to provide some, I don't know, retro arcade-style artwork, if that's something the museum would be interested in. Because I just want to contribute to something that's so unique and so special that brings me back to my youth. I just can't wait. So, thank you for the opportunity to come and take care of it.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Chair?
Please. I'll say, we'll go ahead with those who are on the Zoom call, and I believe Mr. Letterman was next. So, Mr. Letterman, if you will go ahead and turn on your camera and then mute yourself, you will have three minutes to speak.
Actually, I believe he wanted, he changed his mind when calling. Do you want me to call you, Mr. Letterman, or are you able to speak on the video?
Oh, well, I'm on the video now. Let's just do it. Because I was just afraid I'd have a bad connection. Can everybody hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you may go ahead and begin.
Perfect. Hi, my name is Steve Letterman. I'm the owner of 1247 South Gen Autry Trail. It's, used to be the Palm Springs State Access Cannabis Place, and then it got changed to STR1 Inc. I'm, first came to the desert in 1949 and had been, I've been coming here every couple of years since I became a full-time resident in 2003. And that's me. The, the main purpose of me being in this call, or making the call is I've been studying the zoning change and the commission meetings relative to the zoning change of cannabis and odors where my building is. And in the last meeting for the 1241 South Gen Autry Trail CUP, I was involved in that. And I noticed that there's, there's, there's some data that wasn't correct. I wanted to correct the public. I wanted to correct the public record. And through all those meetings and conversations and documents, and it just turns out that there is that, there never was any odor issue out of 1247 South Gen Autry Trail. 1247 South Gen Autry Trail was, started growing cannabis in May of, June of 2015, and they stopped in November whilst the lease ended and they moved out and all cannabis was gone by November 16th. And there was never, ever any issue with odor. I sent a bunch of data over, and what sparked this was Mr. Robertson had gone over, spoken to Veronica about the, the building and made some comments, which is, I sent over a clip from that when Mr. Robertson wanted to read into the public record, and it didn't sound right. So, part of what you get, what you have in, in the documents is I wrote an email to Veronica to verify what was going on. And there's, there was no odor issue that she's aware of since she's been doing her job. There's a report put together by the compliance officer, I guess, with a spreadsheet from 2018, 2019, showing the odor complaints and the odor inspections. There never was any odor complaint or any odor inspection that was negative on my building. In my building, there's another picture there that shows five grow rooms. And each grow room is a room within the room. There's a epoxy floor, the four walls, and the ceiling have six layers. There's a dense wallboard, which is fiberglass, wallboard material, fiberglass. It's an exterior wallboard that is used internally, and then the internal layer is exterior stucco that's waterproof. I've toured the building with FaceTime with the Palm Springs Cannabis Odor Fella. There's no issue with the building and having a correct odor program. That odor will never leave the building is totally possible. The building is over 1,400 feet away from Demuth Park. So, one of the things that alerted me when people were saying, gee, in Demuth Park, they can smell cannabis from my building. It was like, wait a minute. You have the, the animal shelter between me and that, you have the chemical depository between us and me and them, and then you have the, the waste treatment plant, which I'm constantly on to because of the odors that we get released from them. Anyway, it's just a very frustrating situation for me, and I'm working through it. Flynn has been a, a real support professional. I appreciate him. He probably doesn't get thanked a lot, so I'm gonna thank him publicly in the public record. You're allowed to smile. Thank you. And, and I just, in closing, that in servicing the building after my tenant left, is, and even today, people come up to buy from this building. It serviced a public that no one in the Coachella Valley, in particular Palm Springs, is really aware of. Whatever remaining seconds I have, the Palm Springs cannabis world started on a compassionate care note. Everybody was into it for that reason. That has somehow dissipated into the ozone. And wherever you go, you're gonna buy, get high drugs, no matter what anybody tells you. That's all they're selling. And I was, and I am committed to making a compassionate care for people who really do need it. do need. My father died of cancer. I went through a whole issue with him on, on caring and this end-of-life cycle of issues that go on. And, and these are the people that will be coming up. I could, I'm not going, don't have the time, but I could tell you just heart-wrenching stories of people breaking down and crying, like, where can I get stuff? And they don't want to go into the city, they don't want to be known, they don't want to be seen, whatever.
Mr. Letterman, your time is exhausted.
Okay, but thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Appreciate you for listening.
Madam Chair, we have one additional speaker, Mike Morgan. Turn your microphone on.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Mike Morgan. I'm here tonight on behalf of Frontier California for items 5B and C. I just wanted to offer that we have reviewed the staff report and the draft resolutions for each item, and we're in full agreement with both. There are a couple of just small points I'd like to make. Blue Croix is identified as applicant in both resolutions, and we are indeed just the agent or representative for Frontier California, who is the applicant and owner. We are in no way beneficiary of any action coming out of the application. And then for item 5C, which is the parking determination for the switching facility on Sunrise Way, we'd like to add a finding to item D that specifically calls out and identifies the 24 stalls is the appropriate parking requirement for the telephone building. That just reflects the information that's presented in the staff report, and we wanted to make sure that that was on the record. Aside from that, we'd like to extend our appreciation for the Planning Department and the Engineering Department for their support and guidance throughout this process, and we look forward to answering any questions that you may have when the items are called. Thank you very much.
Mr. Newell, are there any other speakers?
I don't have any specific requests to speak, but if there is anyone else on the call, you may turn on your microphone and speak now if you were unable to chat and send me your request. Doesn't appear to have any, have any additional speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. The next item before us is other business, and it's my pleasure to, to state that our city clerk, Mr. Mahia, is going to give the oath of office to our new planning commissioner and also to our reappointed planning commissioner. Mr. Mahia.
Thank you. So, I would like to, thank you for having me. I'm going to start with the reappointment of Peter Maruzzi. If you're ready, and repeat after me, I please state your name.
I, Peter Maruzzi.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations on your reappointment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. J.R. Roberts. If you'll unmute.
Hi, Anthony.
Hello, sir. If you'll please repeat after me, I please state your name.
I, J.R. Roberts.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties of which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, J.R. Roberts, on your appointment to the Planning Commission. Again.
First, would unmute for one second and give a round of applause for our reappointed and new commissioners. Mr. Mahia, will you be back? Commissioner Hirschfine.
Yes.
Has family emergency, so we expect we'll see you at our next meeting.
You will.
Thank you.
And thank you for having me. Bye-bye.
Bye. Our next item is the consent calendar, and these are routine matters that are act, that can be acted on in one motion. We have two items, the approval of the minutes of November 18th, 20, it must be 2020, am I correct?
Yes.
It says 21. So, November 18th, 2020. And item 2B is Trevor and Rachel Whitcomb, owners for a major architectural application, proposing a 2,843-square-foot, single-family residence on a 9,000-square-foot lot on a major thoroughfare located at 300 East Vistacino Road. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move approval, Madam Chair. Paul Lewin.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
So, move.
I have a second, yeah? Commissioner Song, does anybody need to recuse from this?
Madam Chair, we'll note that Commissioner Roberts was not in attendance at that meeting.
Thank you.
Would you recuse on that?
Yes.
Just note that the minutes, you're recused from that vote, but you will vote on item 2B.
That's what I thought.
So, we have a motion and a second. Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin? Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Maruzzi?
Yes.
And Chair Womack?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, moving into the agenda, the next item is item 5A. It is the Museum of Pinball requesting a determination by the Planning Commission that a museum use is similar to other uses permitted in the M1P zone for a proposed pinball museum located at 750 North Gene Autry Trail. And for people's information, that is the Old Desert Sun Building. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. If you'll just bear with me just one moment while I get this slide presentation here ready to go. So, do you see the full screen presentation?
Yes.
So, the request before you is by Museum of Pinball. It is a nonprofit that promotes the art and history of pinball and arcade machines, and they currently have an operation in Banning, California. The proposal is to allow daily admission with operating hours between 11:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. They do also intend to have special events at the facility, and all activities related to the museum are planned to occur inside of the building. The property is zoned M1P. It was originally approved and developed under PD 195, and with, that PD was processed due to some deviations to the M1P standards relative to building height and some parking issue, or parking standards. So, the building was, the uses was previously consistent in the M1P zone. And so, now that the Desert Sun has vacated the majority of the building, the Yachting intends to operate the Pinball Museum within the majority of the property. So, the request before you is to determine that the, and sorry, before I get into that. So, here's an overview of the, of the site at 750 North Gene Autry Trail. This shows the building location here at the center. It is across the street from the Palm Springs Air Museum. So, that's the site as it exists today. So, the request before you is a determination request that's found in chapter 94 of the zoning code. And then for this request, there are four findings that have to be made by the Planning Commission to allow use that is consistent with other uses in the M1P zone. So, in staff's review of these findings, under finding one, we felt that the proposed use is consistent with the intent and purpose of the M1P zone, in that it is a use that would be compatible with the surrounding residential and is, is actually less intense than some other light industrial uses that are typically found in the M1P zone. Specifically, we felt it was consistent with governmental facility or an office use, which are permissible uses in the M1P zone list of uses. Regarding the second finding, staff has visited the site, you know, obviously, of course, it's currently developed with the existing building there. And so, basically, the proposed use would operate indoors and display unique and historical pinball machines that are not anticipated to adversely impact other businesses or residential uses in the general vicinity. Therefore, we don't, we don't expect there to be issues related to noise, traffic, or other operational impacts that would be different from any other business permitted in the M1P zone, and therefore, we felt that the proposed use was consistent with the second finding here. The third finding relative to the list of permissible uses, we felt that, as I mentioned, the proposed use is most closely similar to a governmental facility or a business, professional, or office use, which are permissible uses in the M1P zone. And then lastly, that the use is not going to cause substantial injury to the values of property in the M1P zone. So, you know, we don't expect that that would be the case. The operation would be consistent with other permissible uses, as I mentioned. So, we don't, we didn't feel it would be an impact to other M1P zone properties. So, that, staff has prepared a draft resolution for your consideration this evening with these findings that I've just mentioned. And so, that would conclude my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions the commission might have.
Thank you. The matter is before the commission. Questions from Commissioner, starting with our newest Commissioner, Roberts.
Um, I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Questions from Commissioner Irvin?
Same, no questions at this time.
Commissioner Lewin?
Um, yeah, I've got a question. Just for our general knowledge, if it, if it didn't say museum, and if it was just an arcade, would, would it fit in this use here? Because the finding that it's a governmental purpose, I think hinges on the idea that it's a nonprofit. Is that what the logic is?
Correct. And this is, I would say, a bit more unique than what we would historically think of when we think of an arcade, which is usually a smaller operation within, commonly seen in strip malls or commercial centers. Again, this is unique as in, as it promote, as it will promote the history of pinball. And they'll have a vast array of different pinball machines, which would be, I guess, a different view on pinball or arcade, or an arcade in you.
There is no doubt. I think the, the, the idea is fantastic. I'm just curious about a traditional arcade, if it had, would it, would it fit here? What would, what would need to happen?
So, I think we've actually taken out, within the few, within the past few years, when we've done some updates to our code, we actually removed where, where we had listed arcades, specifically in the code, because it, it was not being, we didn't have requests to have arcades or video arcades. So, it really hasn't been a use that we've seen come through, and so, we've taken it out of the code.
So, it's official. I'm old enough to be historic and considered a museum relic. Terrific. Thank you for that. I appreciate giving, that, that gives me a lot of clarity, David, that arcades have been deleted now. They're so antique, they've been deleted from our code, and we can look at it as artifacts now in museums. That's super helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Song?
Um, yes, just a couple of clarification. If, if the applicant has event after the stated hours of business after 8:00 p.m., they will have to pull a special permission permit that would require the fire department, the planning department, and so on. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. Just like any other office use that may have evening hours, again, it would just have to comply with the city's ordinances and regulations relative to, you know, noise and, you know, any other impacts that are associated with, you know, typical office or governmental facility. Yet, the case where they, if they were trying to have an event outdoors or in the parking lot, that would require a separate land use permit, currently under our code, and so, that would be something that we would condition and we would review under separate permit.
And second clarification is all activities of this museum or gallery would be held within the building envelope?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
Commissioner Song asked all the questions I was going to ask.
Uh, thanks. I have some. We can, we can suggest to you that there be a land use permit that includes some conditions with this. Is that correct? As we approve this, there are a couple of items that got raised by the public, and a few questions I have. Parking, how, what, what is the parking? And have you made a determination on the adequacy of the parking? How many cars can be parked there?
So, yeah, that would be evaluated as a part of the business license review, but correct, you're correct. We would have to ensure that the site does, is adequately parked for the facility, and that would be based on the zoning code requirement. And I'm not sure we specifically had identified a museum and the parking requirements therein. The use, when it was approved, was a mix of office and industrial under the previous, when it was originally approved. So, 219 spaces are provided on the property, and they had indicated that 240, excuse me, 265 were required. So, there was some leeway given, at least under the previous standards back in 88 when the project was originally approved. So, but we would have to ensure that they do have, provide, that they do provide adequate parking based on the intensity of the use.
Yeah. Thank you. And that's something we can include in a, a request as they go through an LUP process if the commission wants that. Landscape, can we require that the landscape be to the original or revised requirements of the city? And one of the reasons. And one of the reasons I ask that is I believe some of the trees that back onto the property have been cut at the back of the property that were a buffer. So we can require that they conform with the, the original landscape plans?
Correct.
Then the question of ours, I actually love the fact that they want to do fundraisers and other kinds of events as well as have this as a museum. I am concerned about the noise limitations to the extent that they have outside events. Can we require the same kind of conditions we would have required with Infusion Beach or with the water park?
Under the land use permit, yeah, we can ensure that those, you know, we impose similar conditions to other projects that have outdoor events, certainly.
Okay. I have one question, I think, for the engineering staff. And just as a disclosure, I live at Ascena. I'm no longer on the HOA board, and I'm not on the NORG board, and I live further away than the restricted, than 500 feet from this. I live probably a mile as the crow flies. And I'm excited about the museum. I just say that. But there is a real concern, and I know that Genatri is a Caltrans road. Is there anything that can be done regarding pedestrian safety? And is, is our engineering department available to speak to that?
Yeah, I'm here. I believe Joel is also on the Zoom as well. And you're correct, you're correct. That is Caltrans. So anything that has to do with the signalization or permission or anything to do with pedestrian crossings, anything to do with the crosswalk or that signal, we would have to run any of those concerns up to Caltrans.
Is it something that you can do, though? I, I know that even when I'm crossing the road, driving out of Ascena, I have to be very careful that people aren't running the red lights there because they drive very fast and they're not used to stopping. So is, what's possible? Or is it something that the city would do to inquire about safer pedestrian crossings?
I would probably ask Joel to chime in on this because I believe that there is probably a procedure in sending that request to Caltrans, but it is ultimately up to Caltrans.
So just like a traffic signal, we would put in a request. Sorry, I'm sorry. Joel Montalvo, City Engineer, apologies. So, yeah, just like a traffic signal, we would have to submit, or the applicant would have to submit it, an application to Caltrans to incorporate any type of device on, on their highway or their right of way. So it would be a request of Caltrans, and they would make the determination whether it's safe or not safe for pedestrians to cross at that location.
And could we include that, make that request?
Yes, Madam Chair, we can include that as part of your determination that city staff work with Caltrans on pedestrian safety at the intersection where this will be located.
And I see that Mr. Weeks is on the call. Maybe, it just would be nice if we could call him and ask him to talk for a few minutes about the museum and what he intends to do and when he intends to open and how much he intends to charge for admission. And, hi there. If you'd introduce yourself. Oh, you're muted. Mr. Weeks, you're muted.
Yes, I'm back. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, Madam Chair and Planning Commission. Thank you for taking the time to review this application. I'm with the Museum of Penball. We've been established since 2015, and we're in Banning, California. We're a 501(c)(nonprofit) organization focused on the preservation of historic pinball machines, artifacts, as you might want to call them now. And we're going to be anticipating to be open, mirroring similar hours to the airport museum directly across the street. Currently in our collection, we have almost 2,000 pinball machines and classic arcade games from the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s. Some go back early to the late 50s. It is our private collection. They will be on display there. There are no quarters. People will be paying an entry fee to come into the museum, and there'll be a couple of different options. One, to just tour the museum and walk around and look and go to certain different types of experiences. Another one will allow you to go in and, and actually play the machines and games for as long as you want, based on your entry fee. So ticket prices are probably going to be around anywhere between $45 and $65 for entrance. And we may, we'll sell annual passes for some, for some hardcore members. We'll be doing some fundraisings and, and galas. We are supported by a lot of tech nerds, if that makes sense. You know, a lot of guys back in the, that are, that are techie, that are really loving, that, that really love old pinball machines and video games. So, you know, we're excited about the Desert Sun location potentially being our new home. We're in Banning at a site that we own, which is about 18 acres and 130,000 square feet of buildings. However, we're in a kind of an off-the-beat path, off the 10 freeway, and it's not a tourist city. It's not Palm Springs. So we, we know that this is where the museum, I feel, belongs. I think it'll be a great asset to the city, and we're excited to get rolling.
Thank you. You've heard some of the questions that I asked. Do you have any issues with any of the items that I've raised?
No, I have no issues. I mean, we, we do, we have concern as, as you guys may or may not know, you may not know, probably don't know. I am also a resident of Ascena. I have two houses here. So sound and privacy and peace and quiet is very important to me, living here. I've been a resident of Palm Springs for almost 11 and a half, 12 years. I bought in Ascena in 2012, my first house, and bought another one a couple of years later. And I, I love Palm Springs. I don't, this is what I do. I mean, this is my area. We, we are going to have all of the, everything will be contained with inside the building. We don't foresee any use for outdoor event space or anything like that. The building's well enough, large enough for us to, to have everything inside the building. So that's that.
And I'm assuming for the special events, those will be beyond their norm, your normal hours of operation?
They possibly can be. We host a couple of the world's largest pinball championships. You know, we get visitors from Australia, all over the globe, that come in a couple of times a year for some of the, the pinball champion tournaments. And there will be some events that might, we may have extended hours and maybe from 10 to, to 9 versus 11 to 8 or something in that, in that aspect. But typically, no, I, I don't see any first issues with the times that we're going to be open. That's kind of, we want to mirror the, the museum across the street typically.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And we're really looking, we haven't acted on this yet, but I'm really looking forward to seeing you open up.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Before the commission, I'm just going to make a quick motion, if I can, and then, and then raise it for comment. I'd like to approve this, make the findings. We need to have a land use permit. And in that land use permit, include his ability to have special events beyond regular hours for staff's determination for outside, any amplified music that if, if there is an event with that, there wouldn't be amplified music, although he's indicated he doesn't want events outside. Make a determination that parking is adequate at 219 spaces. My guess that it will be a request to Caltrans that there, he applies for some kind of pedestrian crosswalk and that the original landscaping or modified landscaping be maintained. And let me open that up to Commissioner Irvin for comment.
I, I have a question for staff. With the, the museum that's across the road, do they have any sound limitations on them at all with outside sound?
I can probably answer that instead, as a person who lives there. They have an industrial classification. It's an approved use. And there's a decibel limit that impacts their use various hours. They don't have a limitation on bass music or outside noise, outside sound. And there have been consistent noise concerns about the, about some of the concerts that are held there.
But would, would, would it be fair to put those limits on that applicant if the building across the road doesn't have the same restrictions on them?
Flynn could answer that. I would say yes, but Flynn can answer that.
Yes, you can put restrictions on this applicant based on their individual use and application.
Okay.
The, at the point that the museum came to, the museum across the street was approved, there weren't outdoor amplified music concerts. Those have come since, and they have raised concerns. They're allowed, but they've raised concerns. Is there a second or any qualifications discussion in my motion, Commissioner Song?
I would like to second with the clarification that it would be an inquiry to Caltrans on what are the possibilities of creating a safety traffic improvement? If Caltrans says, based on our traffic studies, it is not required to have one, then the applicant will pursue according to that and not post that requirement onto the applicant to resolve that issue outside of Caltrans.
Madam Chair, yeah, through you, yes, that is correct. The applicant will not bear that responsibility. However, staff will work with Caltrans to do whatever we can relative to pedestrian improvements.
Okay. So on that, I'll second it. And I also want to express my gratitude for repurposing the building and giving a longer lifeline to one of our freestanding recognizable buildings in town.
Are there other comments on the motion? Clarifications? Commissioner Lewin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure I understand. The, the item is to have a finding to recognize that a museum could be located in the M1P district. And so these additional things that we're adding on, is that direction to staff to, to come back when this person wants to operate the business to, to then? What is happening here?
What I've asked for is that staff go through an LUP process with the applicant. They would be a recognized use, but they would have to apply for an LUP, and there would be some conditions on the LUP.
Okay, so it's a kind of a dual motion. It's recognize this use and require an LUP. Now I'm on board.
And I have discussed that with staff beforehand to make sure that could be done. Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say to Mr. Weeks that I'm thrilled that you're bringing this to Palm Springs. This will add to our magic and give people yet another reason to come and spend more time. And on a personal note, your museum has been on my bucket list for a few years. I don't know why I haven't made it to Banning. Maybe my passport wasn't in order. But thank you for saving me the drive, and I'm really excited for you.
Thank you very much. Look forward to hosting everyone there when we open.
If that is it, can you call the motion?
Chair Womack?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Maruzzi?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Weeks. Moving right along.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Planning Commission.
Item 5B, Blue Crowe Limited on behalf of Frontier California for a parcel map waiver to subdivide an existing one-lot parcel into two separate parcels at 295 North Sunrise Way within the Section 14 specific plan area. And we are going to take both this and 5C at the same time because they are primarily joined. We can't, we can't really do 5B unless we are willing to approve 5C. So 5C is a request by Blue Crowe Limited on behalf of Frontier California for a land use permit to approve a specific parking plan for an existing telecommunications switching facility located at 295 North Sunrise Way. Staff reports, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. So if I, if you could just indulge me for a second, let me share my screen. Can you see it? Is it showing?
Yes.
Okay, let me. Okay, are you seeing the larger screen or, let me see, to swap?
No, you're, you're good. I think it's got the full screen on what.
Okay, so, so the large screen is showing?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, once again. So simply, the, the application is for a parcel map waiver to subdivide an existing one-lot into two separate lots. So, but before I share my slides with you, just let me give you a brief background of this parcel and to tell you a little bit about parcel map waiver. A parcel map waiver is a process that allows the planning commission to approve a subdivision without, I find, the requirement of final map recognition or without the requirement of a recognition of a final map. So once the planning commission approves it, the engineering division, we issue a certificate of compliance, and that will complete the process of it as long as it meets some four required findings. Amongst them is that it is five or less parcels to be subdivided. But in this case, there is only two parcels to be subdivided. Said by the chair, this site is located at 295 North Sunrise Way. The, the parcel, the use has been there since 1961. It is zoned MDR, that is medium density residential, and it is within the Section 14 specific plan area. In today's standards, that would not be permitted because this use is located in a predominantly residential zone area. However, the use predates the specific plan because the building and the use was established way back in 1961. That date predates the specific, the Section 14 specific plan itself. So, and let me just share the, you can just bear with me. So this is the, this is the area map of the location. So at the top is parcel B, has been proposed. And at the bottom, to the south, is parcel A. Parcel A contains the telecommunications switching facility. Again, that was constructed in 1961 and was used as a call center, administrative offices, and for staff. However, that's no longer the case. However, that's no longer the case. With the advancement of technology, they no longer have the need for all that use and the parking space, the parking facility across to the north of the site. Hence, the Frontier is proposing to subdivide the parcel. Overall, the, both parcels are about 3.2 acres in size. And the parking facility was constructed primarily to serve customers and staff of Frontier's in the past. And again, that's no longer the case. They do not, they do not have a customer service at the location. There is no more administrative staff at this location. As a matter of fact, according to the justification later submitted by the applicant, there are only, there's always a maximum of 20 employees at this site. Hence, there's no longer a use for this, for the parking facility. And that's why, that's one of the reasons why the parcel map waiver is being proposed. As you can see, the Amada Road does bisect the, the parcel as a public right of way. One of the findings that had to be made for your parcel map waiver is that they meet the development standards of the zone in question as far as area. That means the overall square footage of the parcel or of the proposed parcel, the depth and the width requirements. This parcel map waiver is in conformance with all those three development standards. That is, it does meet the area, meets the width and the depth required. As I mentioned earlier, there are four findings that have to be made special regarding the area and then the general plan. But as I also mentioned and as stated in the staff report, this area is within the Section 14 specific plan area. And it is zoned medium density residential. However, the use has been there since 1960. So it does qualify as a legal nonconforming use. As the SIFRA analysis is concerned, there are six specific findings that have to be made. Number one, it is in an urbanized area. The subdivision is less than four parcels. It is only two parcels, A and B. The current use is a legal nonconforming use and therefore it does meet that requirement. And there are all services in terms of infrastructure, in terms of sewage and access, road network into the two parcels. It does meet all of that. And finally, the two parcel does not exceed an average slope greater than 20%. And therefore, it does meet a requirement of categorical exemption because there are no known environmental hazards in the two parcels. And as said by Madam Chair, there is another application that's related to this request. It is an LUP, a land use permit that has been required specifically for parcel A. Because once the subdivision is approved, in the future, they will have no, parcel A will have no access to this parking lot area. Currently, there are 103 parking spaces on parcel B and there are 53 parking spaces in parcel A, which Frontier will retain. During the course of a conversation with the applicants and investigation carried out by staff, it is determined that, has been determined that this parking lot has not been in use. And as a matter of fact, you can see that by the condition of the parking facility itself, it has never been in use, as I will also show you in other slides that, that I have of recent photograph that was taken on our side. And so, and because the, the use in parcel A is very unique to the city itself. It is not, there is no comparable use that can be identified in our code. Therefore, the applicant prepared a specific parking plan, unique to this site or, yeah, specific to this site. There are 53 parking spaces there and only 20 employees at any given time. And the hours of operation is from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Again, there is no foot traffic of any kind. There is no customer service being rendered at this location. It is specifically for the employees. And so the completion of the specific plan and according to the investigations carried out by staff, 53 parking spaces will be sufficient for the need of the employees at the location. However, staff is recommending a condition of approval specific to this lot, which simply states that if in the future, if there's going to be any alteration that will intensify uses here, the applicant will have to come back to the Planning Division. And at that time, such a proposal will be reviewed based on the availability of parking spaces. So this is the proposed parcel map waiver. As I said, it will be parcel A and B. Both of them do meet the development standards in terms of area, width and depth. This is it again. This is, these are the photographs of the existing facility to the south. These pictures we are taking today. So, and this is to indicate that there are spaces, there are several parking spaces that are unused. This is also, this is a continuation of the current conditions of the site. This is parking analysis, part of the parking analysis submitted by the applicant, which shows that the existing parking in parcel A should be enough to satisfy the needs of the employees at the site. This is the current condition of the parking lot to the north. According to the applicant, the parcel map waiver will allow them to sell this parcel for a future development. And hopefully, the condition will be, there will be an improved condition at the site once it is acquired by a different ownership. And this, for the photographs of the site, this is the way it looks like today. And here is more to it. So if you have been to the site recently, you noticed that the parcel to the north has been developed. That's the site for the US Post Office at this point. And that will conclude my staff report. The approved, the staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission approved the parcel map waiver subject to the attached conditions. And the same thing goes with the specific parking plan subject to the attached conditions of approval. The applicant spoke earlier and I believe they are still available. Should the commission have any further questions and staff is available to answer your questions? Thank you.
Thank you. The matter is before the commission for questions of staff. If you can take the slides off our screen.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that.
Thank you. Okay. Questions of staff, starting with Commissioner Lewin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just really had one question to reassure me that if the parcel division, the subdivision goes through, the underlying zoning for the current empty parking lot will remain medium density residential?
Yeah, that will be the case, except if in the future they come around with a change of zone application, but it will remain the same.
Right, okay. That's all I wanted. Thanks, Edward.
Other questions of staff, Commissioner Song?
So Edward, you had defined the current function of the commercial, commercial building as far as it is not for public use, it is limited to staff, there is no administration. Is, is that program a part of the, their conditions? So if they do change the program of the building, that they will have to come back to the Planning Department to present the new program?
So it is not specifically watered that way. However, we can strengthen that condition to include any potential change in use and they have to come back to the Planning Commission.
Correct, because the, the future, if they decide to change the program, it will be limited to the total number of parking spaces that they would currently have on Lot A.
Correct.
Other questions of staff? Commissioner Maruzy, was that your hand?
Yes. Do, one of the members of the public expressed concern about the lack of maintenance of the landscaping, not, not just of the parking lot that's not been used, which is in and of itself has been rather shabby for very many years. But the, the building, the, the portion that faces sunrise, I drove by it just to look at it. It's, it's not maintained and I don't know how we can address this in part of emotion because I just, I think it's, doesn't speak well for the, for Frontier. And I don't think it, it's appropriate for Palm Springs. So is there a way we can add that?
Absolutely. Thank you very much for bringing that up. And I did discuss that, the issue of maintenance with the, with members of the applicant's team. And yeah, so that could be, I, I correct me if I'm wrong. You know, the, I'm referring this to the Director of Development Services, but I do believe that that could be an added condition of approval. The maintenance of the building and the site itself.
Yes, the Planning Commission can add that as a condition of approval of this action.
Can we extend? I don't want it just to be one time they mow the lawn and water it and then it's the end of it. I mean, how do we, how are we sure that this will continue as the years go by?
What we might do, sorry, Mr. Roberts, sorry to jump in. What we might do is require them to submit an updated landscape plan for the southern parcel, which staff would then review, approve and make sure that they conform to the approved landscape plan. We'll look at any historic landscape plans that have been approved for the site as the basis for the new landscape plan.
Thank you. That's excellent.
Commissioner Roberts? Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, thank you. I think most of my questions and comments just got answered about the landscape. I was wondering if we could add to the condition of a landscape plan that the landscape that is currently there be cleaned up and irrigated prior to the rest of our action being fulfilled?
Yeah, absolutely. So my intention really is to have them submit a new and updated landscape plan and which will include desert scape and new irrigation plan. Because as I mentioned, the building was constructed in 1961. And in trying to retrieve the old plans, having impossible. And, and so they would have to submit a new landscape plan and irrigation plan as well for our staff review and approval.
I understand that. My question was about timing and that we have them do that prior to getting the other things that they want to make sure it actually gets done. This is one of those things that could easily get lost in a paperwork shuffle.
So, so that can be done. That will be prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance by the Engineering Department.
Are there other questions? I have a question for Mr. Priest. If you're here. I'm concerned, let me, I share the concerns that everybody else has raised. I was wondering if Item 3 on the resolution regarding parking is strong enough and what ways you would see strengthening it? So we make sure that if they change the program and they repurpose the building in some way, that we make sure that there's adequate parking?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm looking at the condition to refresh my recollection here quickly.
Mr. Priest, I have some proposed language.
Okay, certainly. Go ahead.
What I might suggest, Madam Chair, is that we modify Condition D3 in the resolution for the specific parking plan slightly to say that any change in use shall require approval by the Planning Division. Any new use shall provide parking in accordance with Chapter 93 of the zoning code, including any measures for parking relief or off-site parking. No business license for the new use shall be issued until the parking requirement has been satisfied. And then based upon what Commissioner Song suggested, any change in the current program of activities for Frontier Communications shall also require review and approval by the Planning Division. So that way we address any expansion of the current use as well as any future use. And Mr. Priest, do you think that would be adequate?
I believe so. Thank you.
So let's work with that language. I'm assuming that there will be agreement for any motion that we have. Just following up a little on the condition of the landscape. What I would like, and I believe the applicant or the representative of the applicant is here. Are you here?
I am.
Yes, what I would like actually is the landscape plan to go back to the Architectural Advisory Committee for approval. And I wanted to make sure that you would be comfortable with that.
As a condition of approval, Madam Chair, we have no problem with that at all.
Fine, so that there'd be a new landscape plan, it would go through our normal channels. So just looking, listening to the comments, and I hope I've captured all of them. We have the strengthening of item, I believe it's.
Three.
E3.
E3.
E3, as recited by the Planning Director. The condition that there be a landscape plan and that it go through AAC. The condition that no certificate of approval on the.
On the parcel map waiver.
Parcels happen until the landscape is in, has, the plan has been approved and the landscape has been installed. And I don't think we have, I don't, it, I, the question that was asked by Commissioner Lewin in terms of the use, it retains this current use, the current zoning unless changed in the future with the general plan amendment. Am I correct?
Correct.
Was there anything that I missed in the conditions people raised?
No, Madam Chair.
Can I have a motion from one of the members?
I'll approve it. Almost moved to approve it as presented by the chair.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, can we call the roll, please?
And Madam Chair, just to clarify before we move on with the vote, this is to adopt both Items 5B and 5C?
Right, and given the strength that we did of D3, I would prefer not to identify that 20, 22 spaces were what is currently required. I don't think that that's necessary at the, which the applicant requested. But I would leave that to Mr. Priest in the Planning Chair or the Planning Director? Do you have?
What we can do is we can make a finding that the parking spaces currently on site are adequate for the use as currently operated with a clarification that any expansion of that use may require additional parking spaces.
That sounds fine. So that is the motion that's before the commission. Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rosi?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
You're muted.
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
And Chair Womack?
Yes. That item passes unanimously. Moving right.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck to you. And the next item is new to us. It's five D. It's general plan conformity finding for the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year fiscal years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six for the city of Palm Springs. Staff report, please. And can can you please explain to us what our purview is?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to introduce our two members of the engineering team. Before I do that, we must note that Commissioner Song must recuse herself from this discussion. We will ask her to go ahead and turn off her video, and she will not be participating in this item. We have with us this evening Joel Montalvo, who is the city engineer, and also Mr. Don Uyeno, who is principal engineer with the engineering division. They'll be making the presentation to you on this item. I would just like to note that the state law requires the planning commission to make a finding that the city's capital improvement plan is in conformance with the general plan. This is not something that's been brought to you before. This is the first time that we've done it, even though it has been a requirement of state law. So you will see this coming to you on an annual basis. But with that, I want to make it clear, and Mr. Montalvo and Mr. Uyeno will explain this to you, that you, as the planning commission, are not actually approving the projects, but rather what you're doing is reviewing the list of projects and finding them to be consistent with the general plan. And again, Mr. Montalvo and Mr. Uyeno will go into an explanation of that. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to them.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Madam Chair Womack and members of the planning commission. As Director Flynn stated, I'm Joel Montalvo, the city engineer, and joining me today is Don Uyeno, the principal engineer. The staff report, excuse me, the staff report before you is a request of the planning commission to make a determination that the proposed five-year capital improvement program, or CIP for short, I'll refer to it as a CIP, for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-six is consistent with the city's adopted general plan. Fortunately, I don't have pretty pictures or slides, but I'll continue, and hopefully we can explain ourselves. Over the last year, Don and myself have been working to create and formalize our five-year CIP. The the five-year CIP includes fifty-four capital projects citywide and is intended as a living document that will guide engineering staff on programming, budgeting, and ultimately delivery of the capital projects for the city of Palm Springs. As Don and I worked on completing the five-year CIP, we found out about the requirement that Director Flynn talked about. California Government Code sixty-five four-one requires that agencies that have a five-year CIP plan, CIP plan, be reviewed for conformity with the agency's adopted general plan and be submitted to the planning commission for review and determination of conformity. Capital improvement projects are evaluated yearly for cost and prioritization to take full advantage of any grants, federal and state funding available. Each year, the the five-year CIP will be updated to include new projects, remove projects that are not moving forward, and adjust the cost as needed. In addition, we, projects will be moved forward or moved back in the year in which the project is programmed to be completed, depending on on which particular funding we have and how we want to move that particular project forward. In regard to the conformity finding, staff evaluated each project and determined that each of the fifty-four listed projects in the CIP conform to the adopted general plan. The full list of the projects and associated general plan elements, call, policy, or action, is included in your staff report as attachment two. Staff would like to note that the commission's finding of general plan conformity does not mean that the project will actually move forward. The city council may eliminate or add projects in the five-year CIP anytime. Staff recommended the planning commission adopt the resolution and make a finding that the projects listed in the five-year CIP are consistent with adopted Palm Springs general plan. And that kind of turn it over to Don to see if he has a little bit more to add. I went a little bit fast there. If I missed anything, or if you have any questions, I'll answer when time concludes this portion.
Good evening, chairs and planning commissioners. The only thing I could add is that this is new, as Flynn said, or director said, to the city. This was a requirement. In fact, our currently adopted general plan, this is not the updated general plan, but the currently adopted, one of the action items is to conduct a periodic review of the CIP. So we are following the two thousand and seven general plan. And basically, this document is going to be eventually approved by our city council. We we look at the funding and spread all the projects out over the five years. And the we kind of use it as a planning tool. And each project has a sheet like this. So this is a good example where we identify the project, the location, we give it a project description, we also provide a project justification. We do plan out the project over the next five years. So like this project, you know, some money would come in the second year, some money would come in the third year. But again, this is not under the purview of the planning commission. The only thing that we are asking the planning commission to do is to verify that staff has done its due diligence to verify that each project does conform with the general plan.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Marutse?
How would we know? We're going to rely on staff, obviously. I don't know how we could make a determination since we don't know the specifics of each of these items as relates to the specific, to the general plan, so it's a little odd.
Yeah, so this is something that every city has to do. Unfortunately, the city of Palm Springs, for whatever reason, has not done it. This is the first time that we are doing it, and usually what other cities do, they either have a five-year CIP or a ten-year CIP based on certain elements that are in our resolution. There are several elements that refer to a five-year capital improvement project. Basically, as the staff report said, you know, like if if we were to propose, you know, paving over some open space, you know, clearly the general plan, we could not make a finding of conformity. So basically, what you as commissioners are going to do is basically verifying that the city is always checking the general plan, and you know, as staff is doing their due diligence. You know, if if, for example, this example, if we can't find a general plan goal, an element, or a policy that fits with the project, we would not bring that project forward. So basically, that's kind of the.
So, you know, I see the signatures of the city engineer, Mr. Montalvo, and our director of development services, Mr. Fag, so I'm going to rely on their good judgment here.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I could just add to that. While the report was prepared by the engineering division, Mr. Newell and I also reviewed their assessment of the projects relative to conformance with the general plan. As Mr. Uyeno has indicated, not only do we look for things, our projects going in areas where there isn't the appropriate land use. We also look for projects relative to the city's circulation element to make sure that the projects are in conformance with the circulation element in terms of any repairs or extensions or things like that of streets that are identified on the circulation element. So there has been essentially two sets of eyes on this assessment. And so we are certifying to you that, yes, we do find that the assessment made by the engineering division is accurate and we can support it.
Other questions of staff? Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is an odd request coming to us, I believe. Is this going to now be coming to the planning commission annually?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay, so I have to say that I struggle with this. So I'm looking at a list of projects that may or may not ever get done. A lot of them certainly existed before my term. I'm guessing some of them on city council, that is. I'm guessing Paul Willen recognizes any number of these that may have been considered at one time, may never be considered again. With my time on city councils, that these lists were usually prioritized. And the reason I struggle with this is I feel a little bit uncomfortable. I mean, I take the word of our planning staff. It's it's not a, it's not me doubting your work in any way. It just feels like it's a request of a rubber stamp from us. And without us really delving into each request, which I don't necessarily want to do, I'm concerned about us giving this a unanimous vote, making that assumption, and then it being used down the line, where some very controversial project goes before the public, and some future city councillor staff says, well, the planning commission has unanimously approved this project. In fact, that it was in, and I know that you're simply saying that it was in compliance with the general plan. It just seems odd to me. I frankly, I mean, other than just state requirement, it it doesn't make sense to me that this is even coming to us. It seems to me this should be coming straight from staff to the city council. Anyway, I'm done with my rant, Madam Chair.
We'll allow staff to comment on that, and then I have a question.
The only comment I have is that we are moving to the city council for approval of the five-year CIP. As it is the first year that we've created a five-year CIP. This is the year we bring it forward to the planning commission, and our next council meeting, the council will approve the actual five-years. So and also another thing is that all, I mean, there's other agencies and the state that follow the same criteria that bring their five-year CIP to their planning commission.
So this this is a requirement that all cities in California need to follow. The five-year CIP, the capital improvement program, is not something that you are approving. All you are approving right now is the conformity to the general plan. The city council is the one that will be the only body basically approving the five-year capital improvement plan. And as the planning agency for the city, the planning commission is the appropriate body for that, for every city to make that finding of conformity to the general plan. So.
And just to add, to give Mr. Roberts some comfort, we'll specifically note that the planning commission is not liable for any projects in terms of the capital improvement plan. As our city engineering team has indicated, your role is limited here, and so consequently, your liability is limited here. It is really the city council who is responsible for, number one, approving the projects, and number two, for prioritizing the projects. And so they are the ones who really bear that responsibility. The proposed list that you see before you may ultimately be weeded out, if you will, by city council. It has to go through the planning commission first to sign off on conformance to the general plan before they then approve the five-year capital improvement program. They may pull items out of that. They may see a reduced list, so just be aware of that. But again, because your role is rather limited, your liability or responsibility is limited as well.
Before, are going to, are you going to this question, Commissioner Roberts? Otherwise, people had other questions. So are you going back to this? Then please speak.
I just want to say, thank you, Mr. Fag. I I fully understand what you're saying. And I fully understand that we don't take or have any responsibility in these choices for this five-year plan or having anything to do with the projects as none of them has come forward yet. My only concern is basically what we're being asked to do is take your word that they are in compliance with the general plan without us having much research or background, you know, in this, other than the sentence or two we were given in the staff report. So the message to the city council from you is that your planning commission says that this all complies with the general plan. And that's where my, I get a little bit of a stomach ache, because I don't feel like I've really done the work. You know, I understand a lot of this, probably better than many, but I, it still gives me a little bit of heartburn, I should say, sending that message directly to the city council. I wish it were a smaller list. I wish it were a list that we really could make sure did jive well with the general plan. But again, it, this seems like a rubber stamp issue to me, and and I'll leave it there.
Before we go forward with this, one question would be to defer this for two weeks and have someone from the commission sit down with staff and go through every item in the general plan and confirm that they're in the general plan. We could do that and then report back from the commission to or report back to the commission that that has been done, if that would make you more comfortable.
I don't know that that's necessary. And again, I suspect most of these projects will never be done, and certainly not in the next five years. It's it's just the quantity. You know, it's like, anyway, I'm okay to go forward with this. It's just, it doesn't feel like a clean process to me, because it's a message to us from the city council, and I don't know that we're really in a position right now to say that every one of these projects is in full compliance with the general plan. That's all. It's more a comment.
I had comments on two specific things. And one, and this is to staff, items sixteen oh eight and nineteen eighteen. The justification for the library, I believe, should also go to nineteen eighteen, which is the J C Frey Building rehabilitation. That was going to be rehabilitated before COVID for the use of the library. That building belongs to the library. And it should be identified, and it was, they were going to be using, I believe, trust fund and Measure J money to do that. It's actually needed, but the justification should also be library. So it should include, it's not a recreation building. It's used by the library and it's part of their part of the buildings that they own. So if that is going, I know that I couldn't accept the justification that you have on that item. It's the one I know personally from being on the library trustees board for a year. So on that, I would like a clarification. And I don't know how we handle that.
Madam Chair, we as staff can go ahead and handle that on those two items. And so when it goes forward to the city council, we'll make revisions to the note in terms of its conformance and include the comments that you have made.
So I can speak on the J C Frey, Frey, Frey building. Frey, because that was my project. As you are aware, the Friends of the Library uses that for their book sales. Also, the building has no running bathrooms, as well as, you know, the AC units had to be replaced. And so all of these items, like the list of projects, actually, most of them have more than one general plan goal, general plan policy, or action that it falls under. But, you know, this list would be probably about ten pages longer if I were to list every single one of them. As regards to the J C Frey and the library, the reason why it was different was that the main concern was to have a usable. the reason why it was different was that the main concern was to have a usable building. And, you know, the fact that that, so that J.C. Frey Building was going to, we were going to move some of the archival machines in the main library to open that up for some usable meeting space in the library, as well as provide functioning bathrooms for the J.C. Frey Building, and then fix the H system. So it was more about having a fully accessible building that can be used for all that who, you know, visit the library. Whereas the main library, obviously, was for the bigger picture. Which one was that, 86?
As far as conformity to the general plan, as Director Fag mentioned, we could look at it and make adjustments prior to taking it to the council.
Yeah, I'd like to see adjustments on that one, because it's tied, it's really tied to the library renovation. And I'm hopeful that in the next five years, we get to the point that we deal with the myriad problems in the library, so that it stays.
And it was my understanding that the need for the meeting space in the library was independent of whether or not the main library got remodeled. It's a need that already exists. So that project could be done regardless of what decisions are made on the main library.
It was going to be done independently, and then everyone got stopped with COVID.
That's correct. But we're happy to adjust the item as to the director.
Commissioner Loewen, did you have specifics or items on the larger question?
I had a suggestion for next year and maybe a better process that would make us all more comfortable as commissioners.
Please go forward.
So I share the concerns of Commissioner Roberts, and I don't want to hold up this very important work that you guys are doing. I get it. This is the first time it's coming to us, and we're all looking at it going, hmm, we're putting our name on this. So these are all well, you guys do a lot of great work. I think next year, if this comes to us, what I would be much happier seeing is, go ahead and make that report longer, give us the justifications, the conformity statements. And consider that some of them, we don't know by name. We might need to see, this is where it is, a little area map. I know it's going to make a bigger document, but believe me, we look at huge documents all the time. And I really believe that, I know that when I was on City Council, I relied on the Planning Commission's full vetting of virtually everything. In order to do the 12,000 things that council members do, they have to know that, when this kind of statement comes forward, that it was robustly looked over. So for next year, I'm going to support this, just so you know.
So as we have a motion, Flynn, can you have some way of letting the council know that our review of this this year was not robust? And that we'd like to do that in the future, that we had been unprepared for this request?
So the plan for the future for next year, because this document was not blessed by council yet, it's not something we could have posted on the city's website. But once it is posted this year, the idea for next year is that in, for each project, you know, there's a notes page. And in the notes would be to include all of the general plan items that it conforms to, so that you can go through each project. And then, you know, on that project sheet, we can list all the different general plan conformity items, goals, policies, and actions that it conforms to. So moving forward, you know, and then that document can live on the city's website. So you would have more time to embrace and research and verify. So we do have a plan for the future.
I'm pleased to see us starting this. And I would take a motion, as long as Flynn will give that clarification. Do you want me to make the motion, or would anyone else like to?
I'll move approval. I don't mind.
Is there a second? Oh, Commissioner Marutse will second it.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, we will be making corrections to project number 16-08, 19-18. We will also note that the review of the Planning Commission was limited in its scope. And then also, as direction to staff for next year, we'll provide you with the full five-year CIP plan document. And we will also provide maps showing the location of each project as recommended by Commissioner Loewen.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Can you call the, Commissioner Irvin, did you have a comment?
Oh, no, I was just fixing my glasses.
Okay. Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Loewen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marutse?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin? Commissioner Roberts? Chair Womack?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda. Does anybody need a break, or can we go forward? And one question is, do we want to postpone this for two weeks, given that one of the people who asked to have this agendized is not with us tonight? This is the planning, this is a discussion of paperless agendas.
Madam Chair, should we start it?
Let's start it, okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Who requested?
I requested it be put on, but one of the people who asked me to put it on was Commissioner Hirschbaum.
I see, okay, thank you.
Well, Madam Chair, I kind of feel bad for Commissioner Hirschbaum. He, if he is passionate about this issue and he gets called away unexpectedly, is it so urgent that we would pass him by in his comments?
I think we probably shouldn't. Commissioner Roberts?
I'm suggesting that we just start the conversation, maybe get some background, let Aaron do his presentation, but not take any action, and just return it to a date certain, so that Michael can comment.
Commissioner Loewen, do you have a comment to that? Would you prefer to postpone, or?
No, it's a, I'm not going to try and overrule the, we approve this agenda tonight officially. So if we want to go forward, it's fine with me.
Have a report on this?
Certainly, Madam Chair. As you all recall, at our last meeting, I had mentioned under Director's Business that with the adoption of new electronic software, which will allow for electronic submittals, we will also be moving to paperless agendas. This is something that we are doing citywide across all boards and commissions, and not just for the Planning Commission or City Council. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. Based on questions and concerns, what I've done is invited Aaron Brown, who is Assistant City Manager and over the city's IT department, to give a little bit more information about our plans to convert to this new software system and what that means in terms of going to paperless agendas. And so with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Brown, if you would like to talk a little bit more about what we're engaging in here.
Before we do that, some of the substance of concerns regarded electronic plans and the work of the Commission and the ability to do that work, both in meetings where we will be referring to plans and not necessarily looking at plans that go up on the screen, and also our ability to flip through plans and compare things. So it is a concern that has been fairly broadly raised, not with the staff reports as much as the plans. Commissioner Marutse?
And also, how you would address the concern of, I take notes and mark things on our packet. And I don't understand how I could quickly write in a comment or a no to remind myself I want to say something, if it's electronic.
All right. Madam Chair, Commissioner, I will jump in and answer as many questions as I can. With a process like this, it's never going to be a turn on the switch, let's figure it out. The way it normally works, you kind of have a small pilot of individuals that are willing to kind of test that out, so that you can map out all those processes. Because oftentimes, accommodations have to be made, whether it is larger screens, or there's technology that needs to be provided, a tablet, or something like that to give you the access to do what you need to do. The software that we're going to, so January, sorry, July 1, we'll be going live with the first part of the city's new Enterprise Resource Planner, ERP. That part will be the finance portion. Then we roll around to January of 2022, and we'll be going live with Intergov, which will take us to the quote-unquote "promised land" of paperless filing, allowing individuals to provide their plans digitally through a citizen self-service portal. It's a very, I'd say, common approach that many of the cities are taking. It's very cumbersome, obviously, to bring in the paper files, go through that process, when you could submit one single digital file and not have to worry about six files of this, or two of that kind, or whatever it may be, and then it runs through the processes. The entire planning, engineering, building process will be paperless. And then, again, accommodations certainly would have to be made. We'd have to find out what those are. Just because City A does it one way doesn't mean that necessarily that we would do it exactly the way they do it. So what we would want as the city is individuals that would be willing to work with us to find out what is needed, what works, what doesn't work. And that's really what I'd be looking for.
Aaron, maybe if you could share your experience in terms of going paperless with other jurisdictions. While you were with the court system for Riverside County, you had engaged in that project with the judges there. Maybe if you could speak a little bit about that experience and how they made that switch over from paper agendas to paperless.
Absolutely. It really started out with, there is absolutely no way, no how, we can't do this. And we had a different motivation, and less about efficiency and sustainability. It was our budget, as you can imagine, the entire county of Riverside spreads large, and we had 17 locations, and we were constantly moving files back and forth. And we just, when the budget hit, budget issues hit in 2008, we didn't have the money to do it. So the way we were able to solve that was by going paperless. And it was an adjustment across the board. It was a whole new way for many people to do things, some of which had been doing it the way they did it for 20 or 30 years. So it really was a process, but we started out the same way. And as Flynn mentioned, it was a while back, but we were able to accomplish it. We started out by working with individual judges that were kind of power users, if you will, that would be willing to give us the feedback, what works, what doesn't work, give us the, there's no way, it's impossible, you can't because of this. So we, as a team, could go work on that and provide a solution. So I don't want any, any commission or any city staff member to feel like this is a, here's the system, you figure it out, it'll never be that way. And if we can't figure out a solution, then we either build one, or we go, we go get one to bring in in-house.
Aaron, could you also speak to, you know, what City Council will be doing, when their timeframe is in terms of moving to paperless? And then also, could you talk a little bit more about technology, things that we might be able to do to address the concerns, such as Vice Chair Marutse has indicated, is there a way that we can take notes on agendas and things like that in an electronic format? Or what other options we might have available to us? One of the concerns that I've heard from some of the planning commissioners, and as Chair Womack has already indicated, oftentimes, in the meeting itself, we want to be able to look at a plan. Is there any way to address that? So I realize that's like three questions back to back, but you could talk about those things.
We'll see how well I do at retaining all three of them. So let's kind of go backwards and start with what we can do. The agenda and the planning, obviously, is separate. So if you're looking at how the processes and files and all of that flow, some of that we'll have to figure out, because the unfortunate thing is, it's almost a menu, right? It's a buffet. We've got to figure out what works across the board. How is the best way for, and I'll just, Commission A to receive a paperless agenda and their associated files that may be different than Commission B? So that's really the key. From a technology standpoint, it's very easy to provide a system where we can do annotations, markups, bookmarks, any of that kind of stuff within the file, and look at it like Adobe PDF, or whatever it may be, where you can go back and forth on the fly. And when you make your notes, you might want to make in that note, I'm going to bookmark to this part of the drawing, or whatever it may be. So some of that, we, I hate the answer of, I don't know. But I don't know until I really understand, and my team understands, what the needs of the Commission are, so that we can accommodate those. And I go back to the experience with the courts. We went from no way, no how, this can't be done, to really understanding the process of how the courtrooms worked. And the courts, you have criminal, you have civil, you've got family law, probate, they work differently. So we had to figure out how to serve different organizations with the same base product. And we would do the exact same thing across the board.
The other question was about City Council and rolling this out to City Council. When will they be doing this?
Well, we can't roll it out to City Council until we've got it figured out, right? So we're going live January of 2022. I would say, and this is the unofficial goal, right? July of 2022 would probably be a really good way to take that six months, get everything figured out, get the processes in place, make sure that, from a staff side, we've got it figured out, we know what's going on. The staff supporting the Commissions does as well. So we haven't set a hard and fast, this is our goal for when we get there. But I think July of 2022 is probably a pretty realistic goal.
Okay, and so we would probably expect Planning Commission to follow that. So we've got about, well, a little over a year to work through and figure out.
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Irvin, and then Commissioner Roberts.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Mr. Marutse, I mean, not Mr. Marutse, Mr., Michael had spoke about maybe possibly tablets or computers. And did you see in the Riverside judicial system that they use tablets? Or did they have some sort of computers where they're able to touch, maybe highlight, or maybe have access to be able during the meetings not to use their phones or any other personal devices? But maybe something that was provided to allow them to be able to go back and look over and highlight some different things on their computers?
Yeah, so they used computers. They had dedicated computers that were for their processes. Touchscreens were a very touchy subject, because many of the judges didn't want anything to do with touchscreens. And just as an example, it's kind of the opposite. They would kind of reach their finger up to point at something, and that would throw everything off. So they really wanted to stay away from them. There weren't phones or anything like that, nothing was used, because, and to be honest, it gives the appearance, if you're in a courtroom, as you're going through that process using that computer, you start looking at your phone to maybe get some additional information. It kind of looks like you've checked out, and you're no longer paying attention to what's going on in the courtroom. So no additional items were needed. That doesn't necessarily mean that we would be the same way. Perhaps that would be something that is needed to be able to. Perhaps that would be something that is needed to be able to check on that information. And that would be upon the city to provide the equipment that would be needed for the commissions to do their jobs.
We've had concerns, I'm sorry, Mr. Roberts, I'm stepping in, you're next.
So when I joined the City Council, we were handed a tablet and some software. And we were offered, we were offered what was available at the time. And we were trained in how to do the things that Mr. Irvin was describing. You know, make notes, highlight, shown how we can go back and forth. We all tried it for a very short time and handed the tablets back. And Aaron, in the past, you and I have discussed that that is antiquated software and we've come late years. One question for you that you may not be able to answer, and I'm putting you on the spot. Is there any City Council, Planning Commission, or city, I should say, that has gone over successfully to paperless?
New York City. New York City has, and I'm still in the beginning of researching that because that was huge when I started researching who has done it. Because by the size of them, surely by the size, it's got to be much more complicated and harder, but that's an assumption I'm making while I go through that research. And I can't necessarily speak for the sins of the past, but I can tell you, we are a different organization. We think differently, we move differently. I'd like to think I had a little bit to do with that. So what you're talking about, Commissioner Roberts, is exactly the way that we cannot function. So the IT wing, the IT portion of the city cannot be the tail that wags the dog, cannot show up to a commission, council, whatever it may be, and say, "Here's your equipment, here's your software, here's how you do it." It's got to be the opposite. Hey, here is the foundation, this is what we have. You tell us what we need to do, what is going to make what you need to happen, happen? What is going to be better? It, again, is going to be a way different approach than what you saw and what frankly resulted in me getting this job. So I can't argue too much with the way things worked before.
One of the questions that was asked, and I know that for some of us who read plans and when we have major developments, even the small plans that we receive aren't detailed enough to read. Speaking of the lot adjustment we did today, I couldn't, it was too small to actually read the documents. And so, and that would probably be on the size of a large computer screen. So there's, we have in the past asked for larger documents than we get from staff. And I know when I was a developer, I got very used to producing full-size develop, you know, full-size plans in the numbers that were needed and giving them to planning commissions and city councils because I wanted the decisions. So, and I'm just, I'm just saying that what, even what we get right now isn't adequate to really read when you're trying to read notes. They come in too small, I need a magnifying glass. I don't know how we deal with that.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and jump in. One of the problems with the plans you're receiving now is that the majority of them are not what we call digitally native, that they are scans of documents rather than a document that has been created electronically. And that's one of the reasons why the quality of those documents are not to the par that you really need. Once we get to the point of accepting electronic submittals, and so typically what we'll get is either an AutoCAD file or a PDF file, you can enlarge those to such a degree that it's clear at whatever level you read it. And so you would have the ability to zoom in on portions of the drawing, to see actual details in terms of, you know, specific landscape materials and the mechanical equipment screening and things like that that typically are hard to read on some of those larger plans. So again, by going to documents that are created digitally and are meant to be viewed digitally, the clarity of those drawings will be much more clear for you. So I think that in and of itself will help to address that concern. What I think is one of the problems is how do we make it possible for you to view those in the meeting itself? It may require us to have a second screen in council chambers so that you can view plans there at the dais on the screen in addition to having the main screen, which is your voting screen, which doesn't have that level of clarity or detail. So that's something that Aaron and I can discuss and we can work on that. So that's one of the ways to address that concern with the plans.
I know at home, I work from a laptop. And I know Commissioner Hirschbein mentioned that he works from a laptop. And the screens on those, I'm a little cheap, so I bought the smallest screen. But that also won't allow me to magnify it enough to make it work. So those are problems that we currently have. Where for staff, I think you can give staff large screens and dual screens, and that probably will help with staff. But when we're making decisions, we want to be responsible.
And that goes back to the accommodations, Chair. It just depends on what you would need. And I don't know where the line is, I've got to figure that out of what the city could provide for commissioners, whether it's, here's a screen, we're making this change, here's a larger computer, laptop, whatever. We have to investigate that. But on one side, although there would be an added cost, and I have not talked to the city manager about this, so I have to get his input. But we would have a significant cost in getting away, or savings in getting away from the paper. So making a investment in something that helps the commissions do their jobs, I don't think anyone's going to balk at when there's significant savings that would more than pay for something like that. Not to mention the efficiencies and the processes that will make it easier for all of the individuals submitting their plans.
Well, you have three commissions that are involved in this. HSP, four, Council, HSPB, AAC, and ourselves in terms of that level of detail. And Commissioner Song has her hand raised.
So Aaron, are we looking at two solutions? One solution that we're going to try out is having a device while we're going through the pandemic still. And then another solution while we're back, when we're back at the dais? Or are we looking for the solution to be at the dais with a new device?
I can tell you, Commissioner Song, if in July of 2022, if we're still in this pandemic, I'm going to lose my mind. But I don't know the answer to that question because we may be able, depending on what, working with Director Fag, we may be able to have a solution that could solve both, right? So if we had a secondary device that was something that was used in the chambers while you're there, but could be used on Zoom right now, then it would solve both problems. But unfortunately, there are too many "I don't knows" to be able to answer that and be correct.
Commissioner Lewin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Brown and Flynn, I want to thank you for putting this in context for me. So it sounds like the city is moving to a digital receiving system. So people aren't bringing in tons of paper that's manually copied. So we're going to get original high-resolution files. It's part of a citywide kind of computerization integration. And then we run into a particular issue with commissions like us that have to deal with large sets of plans outside of the regular paper agenda. And so, first of all, I want to applaud you guys for doing this. I think it's going to be ultimately a great, a great thing for the citizens and anybody that has to use development services, right? It's going to be very good. Are you guys, I've been in some companies where they say, "We're going to go green and paperless," and they remove all paper. Wouldn't there be room for a commission like ours to say, "Our agendas, our narratives are digital, but the printouts of the landscape plans and things like that that we might need to really have tactile, couldn't there be a hybrid of some sort?"
There can always be a hybrid, there can always be exceptions. I think the difficult thing is to try to understand what becomes an exception because it's just, it's just preferences, the way I've done it versus the exception of, there really isn't a good way to do this, so we've got to create that. The problem is you will not receive a plan that an individual brought in from paper. They will have sent it digitally, so now any print would actually be generated by the city because we're not, we would not be requiring them. We've even discussed the thought of, somebody brings in a paper plan because they don't have a way to do that. What would we do? Would we just scan it? Hand it back to them and let it go through the process? Or what would we do with that? And that's something that has to be figured out.
Well, I look forward to seeing what you guys come up with and...
So do I, Commissioner Lewin.
I'm sure it's going to be good and a challenge at the same time, so I'll look forward to it.
And we are fortunate because many cities are ahead of us on this. I'd love to say we're inventing the wheel on it, but we're not. Most, and I say unfortunately most, because I'd love for us to be there already, are already taking digital files, they're already doing self-service, citizen portal, those kind of things that we're looking at coming up in the near future. And I really wish we were, we've done that five years ago and we're looking at how we make it better right now and not moving to that system as a new.
It would be helpful, Commissioner Roberts, but it'd be helpful if you gave us lists of cities in California that have done this with their planning commissions.
Certainly work on that.
Commissioner Roberts.
I think I'm good. I think my questions have been answered. My, the last question I would have for you, Aaron, is how will you learn our specific needs? Or as our chair mentioned, we really work similarly with the City Council and with HSPB and with, you know, architecture. So do you, is it a survey process that you're in the middle of? Where are we in all this? What I'm hearing is that we're way down the line on this, that you're literally building something from ground up. What do you hope to achieve from us and what will your process be?
So where we're at is certainly building that system from the ground up, but it's more citizen-centered right now. The individuals, the residents, the developers, almost everybody has been frankly demanding this for a long time. You shouldn't have to, in 2021, have to bring paper in when there are so many more efficient and effective ways of doing that. So what we're trying to do is get up to that point. The point after where we get everything digital across the board is more just kind of cleanup on that side. And the way that has worked best for the processes I've been a part of in the past, and Flynn could weigh in on how he's done it, is really the pilot program, is having individuals within that commission saying, "Look, I understand it's going to be additional work for me. I understand it's going to be a process, but I'm willing to do that." And then start providing input, so you build your base system. And then you let that pilot grow because in the same way, not every commissioner on every commission is going to do things the same way. So you've got to be able to have that leeway. So then you had a second person within that pilot. This is how I do it, this is what we need to do to accommodate. And then hopefully you found a way that's dynamic enough that meets the needs of those two individuals, and then you spread it out and see if you can, hopefully you've built a system that works for everybody across the board.
Madam Chair, I think I've heard from the commission. What I think we should probably do is that Aaron and I will probably come back to you in about a month, month and a half, two months, somewhere along those lines. We'll bring to you a list of other cities in California who have gone paperless at their boards and commissions, look at how they solve some of those issues. In the meanwhile, we've heard some of the concerns that have been raised this evening. Commissioner Maruzzi, you brought up some points. Chair Womack, you brought up some points, as well as others, in terms of what you really need to function appropriately as a planning commission relative to this issue. Aaron and I will continue to work together to look at ways that we might be able to resolve those concerns. If you all would like to email me with anything that you haven't discussed here this evening relative to your concerns about going paperless and what you might need, please go ahead and do that at any point in time. So that way I can start amassing what some of the concerns are so that Aaron and I can begin to address those and look at what technology solutions might be available to help us do that. So let's go ahead and proceed on that track again. We'll come back to you in a month or two with some additional discussion on this point. That way Commissioner Hirschbein can also participate and just send the message out to him as well that at any point in time, he can go ahead and email me his concerns. I will point out that the Sustainability Commission has already gone paperless with their agendas. When the Sustainability Commission or the Sustainability Office was incorporated into Development Services along with planning and engineering and building and safety, we have now taken on doing their agendas as well. And I'll tell you that it's a lot easier in terms of us being able to put together those agendas and then disseminate them electronically to the Sustainability Commission members in terms of savings of staff time, savings of resources, et cetera. So there are a lot of positive aspects to it. But as Aaron has indicated, boards and commissions are different, you have different needs. And so we'll again work to address your specific needs as we look to solutions. So thank you for your participation in this discussion this evening and we'll continue working on this issue.
Thank you. The next item is Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments. Are there any? Commissioner Irvin?
Yes, I would like to maybe not do a comment, more of a... I can't figure which word it is to say, but I just wanted to pay homage to the passing of a pioneer, a great woman, brilliant, educated, beautiful woman, Cora Crawford, passed away April the 5th. Cora Crawford was instrumental in bringing the Desert Highland Black History Parade to the city of Palm Springs over 50 years ago. She also was the director of the Childcare Center in the Desert Highland community. Also received Volunteer of the Year from the city of Palm Springs. Volunteer of the Year from the county of Riverside. Also received the award for Vera Terrence, award from the Palm Springs City Chamber. And I just want to just take a moment to tell her thank you and job well done and rest easy.
Thank you. And you can always get in touch with me and we can open a meeting in someone's honor with a comment. And it's a good thing to do and thank you very much for doing this. Are there any other comments? Planning Director's Report?
Madam Chair and members of the commission, in a conversation I had with Vice Chair Maruzzi this morning, we talked about the fact that it would be appropriate for us to get a report from the city attorney's office on the four stalled hotel projects in terms of whatever progress has been made with each of those. And so I would request Mr. Priest, if we... And so I would request, Mr. Priest, if we could have a report at our next meeting on April the 28th, if you could coordinate with Mr. Ballinger on that, we would appreciate that at the end of our agenda on the 28th.
Certainly, thank you.
Planning Director, I think that may be an item of public concern, and it might be a good thing to start our meeting with.
Okay, we would be happy to do that.
That being said, is that your full report?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
So I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Cora Crawford and Richard, or Robert Imber, who we discussed earlier this morning. And thank you. And we'll adjourn until 5:30 PM Wednesday, April 28th.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.